I call to order the November 23, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Lindy? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers here. Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
President Jones here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve a 48-hour waiver to revise this evening's agenda, adding a resolution supporting Ohio Senate Bill 358 extending relief to school districts in response to COVID-19.
No moves.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is revised. Members of the public who wish to speak during hearing, the public must request to do so during the first 10 minutes after the start of the meeting. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking the chat button, submit your name, your affiliation to district, your school community, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. In keeping with the board's standard practice for hearing the public, you must click the camera icon when you are recognized to speak. Individuals who request to be heard after the first 10 minutes of the meeting will not be recognized to speak during the meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special public meeting, November 10, 2020. The special public meeting, November 10, 2020. The special meeting, November 16, 2020. And the business meeting, November 16, 2020.
No move.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Ms. Bolton, Chair of the Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee, please present the revised Audit Committee Report.
Thank you. You recall in a previous meeting, we had a member, Mr. Lindy, present, and we approved the previous minutes. This is revised with an additional attachment. And I would direct your attention to the attachment, which further explains some of the other stipulations and requirements regarding the internal audit and also the additional information regarding the continuing work on the Human Resources Department's efforts in their audit. Thank you.
Okay. Do board members have questions or comments about the report? Okay. I need a motion to approve the revised committee report.
President Jones, I do have one question.
Yes.
Member Bolton, was this because I missed something in my presentation of the minutes or was there some other cause for the addition?
Your presentation was absolutely stellar.
That's why I was checking.
Okay. We have a motion. Did we get a second?
Second.
Thanks. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. So we have several presentations tonight, and we're going to ask Treasurer Wagner to present the first presentation on the five-year forecast.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am pleased to present to you the November five-year forecast, and it's being submitted for approval through a resolution tonight. So in front of you, you have, if you want to follow along on the slides that are on the screen, and then we have a blown-up version of the five-year forecast so that I can read it. I have over 50 eyes. Okay. Get started. So I always introduce the forecast by stating the purpose, and it's required by the Ohio Department of Education for all 613 school districts, and we have to file twice a year, in November and in May. And it's, the purpose of the forecast is to monitor district solvency in a very financially transparent way. It's a focus on the general fund only, and it focuses on cash that helps us to make future financial decision-making. I'm so used to you doing this, I keep forgetting. Okay. So factors that influence the forecast. We have, we will have three state biennial budgets in this five-year cycle, all of which are broken. The state foundation formula has been frozen from the last year's level, and if you recall, we were on the cap for two years before that. So we were funded, we were frozen at a level that was already $10 million down because of our enrollment growth, in addition to the state, the cut that they had this last year. That foundation formula is all based on relative wealth across the state. So if you remember, you remember me saying there's an overreliance on property wealth, and Cincinnati is considered a wealthy district. In fact, our state shares the lowest among all the urbans. It also includes pass-through funding. If you remember, it's all the tuition that we pay, it gets deducted off of our formula, but we pay for students to attend community or charter schools, the Ed Choice vouchers and non-publics, and the autism and Peterson Scholarship tuition. We typically use a 3% to 5% inflation factor as we look at the future years. And then this year, of course, the biggest influence has been the pandemic closure and the state cuts. Also, with the pandemic closure, the consideration of the instructional models had different staffing level needs. So the forecast is all about cash, and I know the format that the state makes us use is a little confusing to the general public, but I've done a restated executive summary here, showing you that as we finish one year with cash on hand, that becomes our beginning cash balance the next year. And so because we cannot have a negative cash balance in a three-year cycle, and because the board's guideline does not want to go back to taxpayers for new money, we have to kind of back into how much cash do we need to hold on hand in order to stay positive in the future years? So how much can we actually spend based on the revenues that are estimated to come in? And that's how we're starting to set the budget targets. So a pie chart on this year's revenue, we estimated $616 million. You can see that the big blue piece is our property taxes, so our local sources represent over 50% of our funding in the general fund. The state proportion has actually been reduced each year. Last year was at 39%, now it's down to 38.6%. Some of the other sources of revenue are transfers, advances, and prior period refunds. We typically get refunds from E-Rate and Medicaid reimbursement, and this year we got a really nice kick from back from Bureau Workman's Comp. It was a dividend that was issued. The two green slices there, the biggest one represents the state foundation formula for both unrestricted funds and restricted, which are economically disadvantaged and career tech. The light green pie chart is the state's reimbursement to property tax credits. So the homestead credit that is up to $25,000 for senior citizen, low-income seaters citizens, and then the rollback is the 12.5% tax credit that's on everybody's property tax bills. But that only applies to levies that were passed before 2013. And I just want to remind everybody that our property taxes, so the 51% of our revenue does not fluctuate with enrollment. So as we grow, if that dollar gets spread thinner. Here's a five-year look, or actually six years, because I showed you last year too, but on the bar chart. So you can see that the line at the top, fairly flat. There, we have no formula to follow, so it's hard to determine what our revenues are going to look like from the state, and so we tried to keep it as conservative and accurate as possible. I do want to point out, on the last two years on the right, the dark blue blocks is the next levy that's coming up for renewal. And now we just passed one, we have a breather for a year, and then the next time we'll be on the ballot again. I'd like to start introducing the concept of creating a substitute levy and making it continuing. This will be the third renewal. It was first enacted in 2008, and it's been renewed twice already. So something to consider as we move forward. So focusing on the forecast from May, on the revenue side of the forecast, from the May forecast to November, we actually increased our revenues by $24 million, some of which we've already presented to you as part of our budget presentations. We did a revision, a minor revision in September. But also now that we've had property tax collections and the Bureau Workman's Comp check came in, or we were notified that was coming in, we were able to increase it some more. So we went from a 19.1 increase to revenue to 24 million in revenues. So that helped us with our budget balancing efforts. Switching to the expense side of the house, the pie chart, you will see the two blue chunks off to the right are personnel-related. That represents 25% of our total operating budget, which is odd, because the big yellow chunk on the other side is the school-wide pool transfer. So out of $213 million, 90% of that salaries and benefits are, we're more around 50% salaries and benefits compared to our total budget. And compared to other districts who don't outsource their transportation, their salaries and benefits are typically around 80% or 75%, 80%. So because we have a very large outsourcing effort in this district, our personnel costs look lower. The big green chunk at the bottom are the purchased services, $197 million in the forecast. The biggest chunks of that are transportation services, tuition, about $114 million in tuition, our technology leases, about $18 million, and utilities. The little red pie slice at the bottom are supplies. Those are representative textbook adoptions, all the instructional software we use, and fuel. Those are the three spenders out of that area. I've started breaking up the transfers so that you can see the difference between the school-wide pool, the debt transfer, and the facility building transfer, just to be a little bit more transparent and educate the public a little bit more. So once again, here's a long-term picture of the expenditure side of the house. You can see the first year to the second year, there's a little bit of a blip there, and that's because last year we underspent because we were closed. So it looks like a bigger growth, and it really is. And everything else stays flat. Because we don't know what the formula looks like, and we have to maintain ASH, get us through that third year, we can't allow our expenses to grow. So the only thing we forecasted in here were step increases, which were in the collective bargaining agreement. Any new money, any new spend has to come out of whatever something else is being spent on. We cannot grow this budget, or we're going to have to go back to the taxpayers for new money soon, sooner than you want. Comparing May to November, once again on the expenditure side of the house. In total, it looks like the expenses went up by $28 million, but if you'll notice in the May column, there's a negative $11.9 million right in the middle there under other expenses. That was our attempt to identify how we were going to spend the CARES Act money. We only knew it was coming. We didn't know what the rules were at the time, or where we were going to use, take, what line items were going to take that out, so we just threw it as a negative into the other expenses, knowing that in November it would be reallocated. So those are the biggest changes. The supplies and materials, the increase in there is representative of the math textbook adoption, and the increases in capital outlay were mostly building renovations on the two buildings we bought last year. Okay. So back to cash again. So the blue bar represents revenue, and you can see that it's fairly flat, grows very little over the next four years. The red line represents expenses. You can see it's almost flat, and the yellow line represents our cash balance. So as revenues go up, our cash balance will increase. If expenses go up faster than our revenues, then our cash balance is going to decrease. And right now, we're forecasting to cross over to that deficit in 2024, so we met the three-year requirement, and the fact that we're not projecting to go for new money. So with that, I will entertain questions?
Okay. Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Lindy, followed by Mr. Murawski?
Thanks, President Jones. And President Wagner, on the slide, the one that says focusing on FY21 maiden November revenue. I think it's back one. Maybe back further. Yeah. We're 24 million better now than we thought we'd be, is the way to read this?
Correct.
And can you just, the big drivers of that, the 3.6, the 5.4, the 6.2, can you just narrate those one more time?
Sure. So initially, we anticipated, you know, last year we got cut $7 million for the state formula, and we thought there was going to be a second cut this year. So in the May forecast, we anticipated that second cut. So with conversations with Aaron Roush at ODE, he indicated that there would not be another cut this year unless there's something catastrophic happens. But we decided to, and none of the other treasures and the urban treasures did a cut, so I felt pretty comfortable putting it back in. The second change was our TIF revenues are up more than we anticipated. And if you'll remember, at the end of last year, right before we finished our agreement with the city, they sent through 15 new TIF districts, and so that activity is growing faster than we thought.
Is that a 5.4?
That's it under other revenues. The 5.4, that's the TIF increase, and Medicaid came back a little bit higher than we anticipated. The row called "Advances in," the $6.2 million increase, is simply a function of the end of last year, our advances to the other grants were higher than we anticipated because the state was slow on reimbursing us. So typically, we advance about $3 million a year to each, to the other funds, and then it just reverses itself in July. It's just a temporary movement of cash. This year, it was a $9 million advance, so the increase is $6 million. The line, I know I'm jumping all over the page, but I was doing it in order in which I introduced it to you. The top line, the general property time, we also, in May, if you remember, we were in a major economic downturn. People were being laid off all over the place, and we anticipated an increase in delinquent taxes. We're not seeing that. We're actually getting a little bit higher than we'd anticipated, mostly in the utilities, the PUP. And then the very last increase, the last line down, there are other financing sources, is reflective of the Bureau Workman's Comp dividend. There's a $3.9 million dividend, and 3.3 will hit the general fund.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Murawski?
Thank you, Treasurer Wagner. On that same slide, is the Hamilton County School reimbursement program factored in at all, or have we looked into doing that?
No. I just had a conference call with the woman you introduced me to a week ago, and they just yesterday released the application.
Yeah.
It looks like we may get 1.7 million. It's $50 per student.
Yeah.
And so I have Sarah Trimble Oliver and Susan Bunty are actually looking at how we would apply. The deadline to apply is December 3, and it has to be spent out by December 31.
Great. Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Just maybe for the public's sake, you could explain the reference regarding Hamilton County one more time.
So Hamilton County got a CARES Act grant, just like we did, and they were having trouble setting down, is my understanding. They're having trouble spending it down by December 31, so they wanted to give it to the school districts to help us out. All the school districts in Hamilton County are being offered to apply for what they're calling a mini-grant to help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Treasurer Wagner, and it looks like you have the second presentation.
Yes. And I'm thrilled to be here tonight to present the budget that we've long worked on. Three key messages. This was because Finance Committee teased me about holding the good news until the end, so I actually decided to put it in the front slide. First one, we bent our budget target. Yay.
Yay.
Second one, supports the health and safety of our staff and students. Third, no additional reductions enforced are necessary to meet this budget. And four, it allows for a return to classroom instruction face-to-face, hopefully in the second semester. And all this was done using the guiding, following the guiding principles that were established in the summer when COVID happened, and we were trying to determine how we were making decisions. And like I said, it follows health and safety of our staff and students. We always use data to guide our decision-making. I try always to be fiscally responsible, maximizing in-person classroom time, and always with a lens of equity. So here's a timeline. I think you've seen this before, and it really, I mean, this has been like a really long road for us, but it really began back in March when we closed. We immediately started pivoting from how do we operate in a remote session to what's next year going to look like? And so we've been back to the drawing board many times, but in June, the board adopted a 90-day appropriations resolution to give us time to figure it out. And then in July, we adopted the 2-3 model, made some reductions. In August, we pivoted to distance learning, the 1-2-2 model. In September, we did an appropriations amendment for the full year, $625 million. And then in October, returned to the 1-2-2 model and welcomed our students back, and we began engaging the public again with the budget. And now here we are today. So here's a picture of the budget story. Because we were in the midst of building a new budget that was supporting the second year of the strategic plan, and we'd heard that we were going to be losing revenues, we kind of set that plan aside and started focusing on what are we spending our money on now, and how's that going to change, and what can we reduce? So we started with the $665 million budget from last year. We added to it our planned enrollment growth, and I have a slide that goes into a little bit more detail of this. You've seen this before, but I just want to remind you. Our planned enrollment growth, we had several schools that were adding grade levels, our strategic plan investments, you know, Lighthouse, Mozart, preschool expansion. COVID was a surprise to us. So the general fund actually has focused $21 million, budgeted $21 million to support COVID expenses. And then if you recall, last year, at the very end of the, mid-year, we realized they changed the Ed Choice voucher eligibility that increased our budget, I'm sorry, increased the spend by $4 million that we didn't have budgeted. But I'm carrying that over, and then I'm putting an increase to five for this year, because they're already talking about changing the eligibility again. So off to the right corner, that's our budget target from May, which was $625 million, and that was a heavy, heavy lift for us, as the initial request with last year and then these new things came out to $707 million. We were actually looking at $83 billion reduction. I'll never forget the look on Laura's face when I told her that. So the next slide shows you, I won't go read all this because you've seen this before, but just kind of highlighted a couple of things. We had four schools that increased grade levels. We added 12 ELL teachers, and we increased instructional supplies. We had a collaborative project with CFT to try to get more classroom supplies in the hands of the teachers and standardized package, so they all got flip charts and, I can't think of other things right now, but there was a whole package that every classroom was supposed to get. So we increased the budget by $600,000 to support that. On the strategic plan investments, I mentioned we bought Mozart and Lighthouse, and then we had to kind of renovate, clean them up a little bit, not the major renovations, but enough to get by. We added 10 counselors, and we had the textbook, the math textbook adoption, that was $5.8 million. In terms of COVID expenses, here's a list of the things we anticipate having to pay for COVID. We created the super subs. Actually, we used an old idea that Paul had done the prior year, but instead of having daily subs bounce from building to building and possibly spreading virus, each building has their own super sub based on the enrollment of the teachers in the building. Now, we didn't fill all those because things kept changing on us. We expanded the CISA Digital Academy. I know there've been at least 36 teachers and possibly more added to support the increase in enrollment there. We put nurses in every building, even though we're using student wellness money to do that. The student wellness money, we don't know what's going to happen with that next year, so that might be something that has to return to the general fund. And then, of course, we expanded our technology, the awesome technology team that we have. So what do we do to close the gap? I already, I kind of walked you through these revenue changes from the previous presentation. I didn't necessarily anticipate doing them on the same night, so here they are again. This was the initial revision, the $19 million. The only thing that's not shown on that forecast that we just talked about was that we ended the year last year with a little bit more cash than we'd anticipated, so that helped too. Now, and here's the increase from the September or the November forecast that we hadn't already claimed. That's the increase in property tax collections, and then the Bureau Workman's Comp dividend. So what does that mean for our budget? So we revised, we revised the budget target. That's the block on the left-hand side. The forecasted expenditures is $650 million. We subtract out the advances because that's a temporary movement of cash that I'll have to budget for it, so our budget target is $647 million. On the right-hand side, the last file that we created was in October, we had it down to 692 because of some of the summer adjustments, and then we cut another $45 million out to get to 647, and we have about $200,000 to play with. So that's my target. We bent our budget target, a little picture. So this is how we got the expenses down. So if you recall, in July, we reduced 179 positions, and we cut the elementary schedule E-budget by a million dollars. And then since then, we went through and looked at a historical average on our vacancies. How much money do we save in salaries? Because we always have a level of vacancies coming and going. And so we had a free-year average of $6.7 million and related benefits to $9 million. The opt-out line represents ASPY. When we went to a 1-2-2 model, we switched them to four days a week, and instead of having them lose a day of pay, we offered them to work four nines almost, and that they could help us with the bus monitor duties before and after school, but we gave them a choice. So if they chose not to do the four nines, they only wanted to do four of their standard work hours, they could do that, and we had several people choose, I think it was 218 if I'm mistaken, but that will save us $1 million, but it's only while we're in blended learning. So when distance learning, that plan doesn't apply. We go back to paying them the regular standard work week. We reduced the overload budget. So in the collective bargaining agreement, we have staffing formulas that say, for example, in a kindergarten classroom, they, for 18 kids to have a teacher, and then when you get the 19th student, you put a pair professional in there, up to 25, and then at the 26th student, you add another teacher, take the pair away. But the teachers can sometimes decide they don't want the pair, or they'd rather have cash, and so there's a budget of $1.6 million in the collective bargaining agreement. But in speaking with the CFT president, we agreed that we probably wouldn't be spending that because we're only spending about $300,000 a quarter anyway, so we cut that by half a million dollars. The next line are the TAC reductions, the Teacher Allocation Committee. Every year when we build a budget, we build on student projections, and you're going to hear about that in just a little bit from Ms. Boyle. In September, right after Labor Day, we typically right-size the staff based on who showed up where. Well, that got delayed this year for a variety of reasons, and it happened in November instead, and so we were able to relieve the general fund of $4.5 million on enrollment reduction positions, all vacancies, or repurposed, so no RIFs. We also decided that because we weren't having to reduce a bunch of stuff, we don't, we really didn't need the TAC budget, that's $950,000. We'll set that aside. The super sub line, we originally had $8.8 million in the budget. We cut that in half, so we were only filling half those positions, but this dollar value only represents half of a year of the half that we cut. So on January, when we go back to face-to-face, we need all those super subs, and we have the money to do it. Okay. So then the next couple of lines that show a negative, those are things that we have to add back into the budget because of our experiences. For example, our unemployment bills are going up. And you might ask, why would that be? We haven't laid anybody off. Well, if an employee has a second job somewhere and they lose that in Well, if an employee has a second job somewhere and they lose that income, say they were a waitress somewhere. They lose that income, the Ohio unemployment department proportionalizes that income loss to both employees. Even though we didn't, we're still paying them their full salary, we have, we bear part of that. And so we're having some challenges. HR department's working hard to challenge some of those bills, but we're trending a lot higher. So we're going to have to add $2 million to that budget. The long-term leave pool, we're just seeing a higher experience on people taking long-term leave right now because of COVID. Sick leave conversion, we had a lot more retirees than we didn't anticipate it. And so we're having to increase that budget on their converting their sick leave as a payout. And then the DWN stands for district-wide ventures. We needed to budget those stipends. So as a net $31 million, 16 and a half happened over July before that, October changed. And then another 14.8 came from personnel-related items. So the next slide shows you the non-personnel cuts. So initially, remember, we cut $8 million in vendor contracts. We either cut, delayed, reduced, whatever the case may be. It was $8 million to the general fund. Then when we pivoted to the 1-2-2 model, we determined that we would have $3.9 million in transportation savings because we wouldn't be transporting our children on Mondays. When Walnut Hills went distance learning, we estimated a $630,000 annual savings. And when we recently pivoted back to distance learning, starting today, today or tomorrow, is another $688,000 in savings for transportation and fuel for that extended time over the winter. The next line is actually a repurposing, oh, no, I'm sorry. So you recall when we first got our CARES Act allocation, it was $23 million and then non-publics took their share off. And then they reduced our share and gave more money to the non-publics. Well, that got reversed and so this $3.5 million is the money coming back to us to use. So we're going to take the tech leases out of the general fund to put them in the CARES Act. We've received approval today to do that. The next line was we had anticipated having to hire a bunch of bus monitors to monitor, that was redundant, to ensure social distancing on the buses. And instead of doing that, we got creative with the ASPI staff and did the four nines. And so we don't have to use that money in the CARES Act to do that. So we're actually going to use that money to help pay for those tech leases as well. The next couple of lines are things that just didn't get added into the budget. We received an invoice from Imagination Library of $64,000. So I have to increase that budget to pay that bill. They actually submitted next year's budget with that, so $100,000. We mistakenly cut one of the contracts. There was a little bit of confusion about which one was which, and so we're having to correct that. This is the DYC contract that supports the jobs for SISI grads. We canceled almost $12 million in POs. So you remember last year, you kept saying, how much are we saving because we're not operating? Well, it doesn't really come to fruition until all the bills pay out on last year's POs. And so last check Friday, last Friday was our last check run of those. I found out today, there's 58 more invoices out there. So there's another half a million dollars sitting out there to be paid, but we can still claim the $12 million in savings. And then there was some duplication in budgets, like the nurses' contract got actually budgeted in the Student Wellness Fund and the General Fund. So we corrected that and we did something similar to that with the facilities projects. The largest and what really helped us get to that balanced budget was the delay of Vision 2020. Non-personnel, so if there was a contract that was already done or employees that were hired to support their Vision 2020 program, we left those alone. Mostly the supplies with the way we are in distance learning and then having half the students. We figured it would be difficult to continue down that path. So we're just going to delay that and help that, support that next year. So that came to a $38 million reduction in non-personnel for a total of $70 million. But because we'd already claimed the first 16, five, we're only showing the 30 million, the $45 million to reduce that October number. I just wanted to point out that we were able to, through this work, preserve 670 new positions. If you recall in July, when we were sharing all the different instructional models, some of them required riffing of 700 positions or more. And that was a big sticker shot for all of us. And so we went back to the drawing board and came up with different models. So in July, when we adopted the two-three alternating weeks model and then switching to a 1-2-2 after the first six weeks of the year, we had to reduce 179 positions. I'm happy to say that 173 have actually returned to the district and to other vacancies that they were properly licensed for. And in October, we did a preview of the TAC review. And at the time, our enrollment suggested that we could lose 269 positions. And that would require a riff of 85 people. But the staffing team of Assistant Supes and Paul McDole came up with the staffing safety ratio. We needed bodies in the buildings to help with temperature and social distancing and isolation rooms and whatnot. So they were able to hold on to some people. Though in November, when the teacher allocation committee actually went forward, they reduced 158 because our enrollment had started to rebound again. So when they right-sized to the actual enrollment, it was 159 positions that were being reduced. 77 of those were repurposed into those safety roles. And I'm very pleased to say that we don't need a reduction in force. All the other positions were vacant. And so HR department does a fabulous job helping people from one building go to a different building in a different role. So this is the dilemma because it was really complicated and we kept, we went back and forth on this. The challenge on staffing, which represents a huge chunk of our spend, is staffing for the current versus what we think the new normal is going to be and how can we be ready to return safely? And so I gave you some examples on this table to show you how difficult this is. So when we're in remote only, we don't necessarily need all those overload pair professionals or security or NAP aides. When we're in distance learning and blended, we need some, but not all. And then in January, when we return to the in-classroom instruction, either four or five days, we're going to need our full complement of staff. So if you lay them off in October, you're not going to get them back in February, January, when you really need them. And so it was always, is a very difficult exercise to make sure that we had the right amount of staff for the right period. I'd like to end this by reading a thank you note. I don't typically read word for word on my PowerPoints, but I think this is, this is important and it's very heartfelt. Thank you to our Board of Education for the time and encouragement to let us finish the process successfully. Thank you to our parents, staff and taxpayers for their advocacy, patience and support. Thank you to the superintendent and the performance leadership team for their unrelenting support, creative collaboration and sacrificial giving. Thank you to our principals, teachers and student support staff for their adaptability. To our central staff for their very long hours and willingness to pivot to new directions. And especially to our collective bargaining leadership teams for their collaboration, flexibility and willingness to change roles to support the new needs of our SAPIA students. So with that, I present the budget for you to approve.
Thank you.
Questions?
Board members, questions and comments? Mr. Lindy?
I mean, are we allowed to give Jen a standing ovation? Is that something we're allowed to do?
No, it's them. Just up here to speak.
I say that not really kidding, I don't have any questions, Jen. I got a chance to see this in the finance committee meeting last week. But I was one of the people who said, I think you're burying the lead about how, what good news this is. And I just wanted to say thank you. You're a very humble leader and I think that's part of what makes you great. But I want to thank you personally for your leadership on this and say that I think this is really quite a big deal. And I can't imagine a more complex, I can, because I know what the superintendent does. But I, it's hard to imagine, I think, a more complex task than this and just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just mimic what Dan said. This is very good, Jen. And to all of the leadership team and everybody, you guys did a great job with this. Thank you.
We do make a good team. Thank you.
Ms. Fulton?
Yeah, it's second and third that thank all that made this possible. Just to reemphasize the things that Jen was telling us as well as kind of some additional context as we look at it. You know, we don't spend money just because we have it. We have been practicing great fiscal responsibility for a number of years and we should be very proud of that. Unlike the federal government, we have to have balanced budgets. But I think Jen's focus on the cash going forward is so critical since we're part of the promise that we made two years ago, knowing that the five-year forecast had two, as she said, renewals in it. We can't go back to the public to ask for more money or new money. And so that's been part of the effort. And I think the strategy to prevent that is within the cash forward is crucial. I think it's remarkable that superintendent and the treasurer and everybody maintained the personnel complement. So when people, you know, it isn't about saving jobs, it's about preserving the complement so we could do what the superintendent had said, which was we are ready to do whatever model we have to do. So I don't want anybody in the public to ever think that we haven't been committed to in-person or we haven't been committed to equitable remote. We've, we are paying for it financially and we made sure that we had the capacity to do it. It's a remarkable effort, I think, the fact that we also have had the strategic plans first two years in the midst of all of this. We made a commitment when we spent so much more in that first year of the strategic plan. We made a commitment to go back down and draw back down. And to a certain extent, we've been able almost to achieve that. Within our giant budget being as close as we were to that 625 is really remarkable. And especially in the, in the name of, in the midst of COVID. I'd also, and I don't want to belabor this, but this is, I think Mr. Lindy is right. This is really a remarkable achievement in the midst of this. You know, we have an inside joke about these bridges and trucks and cars. But I would like to suggest, even though I've said from the get-go, I hate that analogy, I'm going to use it too. Yes, this is a bridge from fiscal year 19 and 20, 21, and more importantly, to the next one. Because we can only take a few weeks, maybe not even that, to rest to get to fiscal year 22. And the fact that you all went through all of this to get to tonight makes us better able to do the rigor and the hard decisions that we're going to have to make for '22. So it's been hard, but it's been very beneficial. But to the treasurer's and superintendent's point, we're trying to design, and I think that OPEG captured it for all of us. We're trying to design a new CPS. The way you do that is with a new budget and a new budget process. And you have gotten so much closer to even thinking about doing that. So this is a huge, huge effort on everybody's part. So I appreciate it and keep the context because we may not be able to restore what we've cut. We may not be able to have all the contracts we had. We may not be able to do some of the stuff we may want to do. But what we're going to do is actually been kind of, the field has been sowed, if you will, for the next big step. So I appreciate this work.
Yes. Other questions or comments?
Well, we'll end Treasurer Wagner's presentation. Much appreciated. Thank you so much for the hard work. And you know, it, the person who manages the purse strings probably catches more hell, you know, about this. But, but I do think that people, I get the sense that our community understands and that our teachers and our staff understand how, how and why we've had to pivot and that changes the numbers and all of that. So this was a great presentation, by the way, and you know, even I can understand it. So thank you, thank you again.
Thank you. It's both an honor and a privilege.
Yeah. Thank you. Let me just ask, okay, never mind, he went off. Going to ask Mr. Messer if he had any questions or comments. Okay, so we're going to continue with the presentation, Superintendent?
Yes, so the treasurer's two presentations were a wonderful segue and bridge to our conversation tonight. So I'm going to invite Krista Boyle to the stage, to the microphone, to be able to present the projections for the upcoming school year, recognizing that these projections will lead us to the budget for next school year as well as the staffing to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. First slide, please. So this is just a quick snapshot of our enrollment history. It shows from October 2020, in October of 2020, our actual is 35,261. This is down due to the pandemic, about 1,100 off of 36,366 last year. And it's down 1,600 from, excuse me, from our pre-pandemic projection of 36,862. Next slide, this is just a snapshot of trending over time. And really the takeaway is that the pandemic has interrupted our growth trajectory. Next slide. These are changes year over year. And it shows that CPS and non-public are both down. CPS is again down about 1,100, non-public down just under 400. Charter schools are up slightly. Next slide. This K-12 market share, which has stayed roughly flat for CPS. Again, non-public is down slightly and charter is up slightly. Next slide. These are demographic comparisons. The largest change is in our Hispanic and English learner subgroups. Hispanic is up 1.2 points to 7.9%. English learners are up 1.5 points to 7.8%. Next slide. And now we'll get into a couple of directions that we can go. So the first one would be a return to our 2019 actual enrollment, the pre-pandemic number of 36,366. This would be an increase of 1,105. And just to give you, just to dig into the numbers a little bit, pre-K through kindergarten was down about 1,000. Grades one through eight enrollment was down 490. And high school enrollment was actually up, just under 400. Just for context, the average yearly increase over the last five years, just as a reference point, is 598. And our goal would be to stabilize and return to a growth path. There are several assumptions that go into this. So on the next slide. It assumes that we return to a five-day-a-week in-person classes in fall of 2021. It assumes that high school maintain their enrollment. And that pre-K three to eight, so elementary recoups about half of their losses, so just about 700 students. It also assumes that the 1,200 additional students enrolled in CDA remain there or return to their original CPS school in '21, '22. So why do these assumptions matter? Because the reduction is in the younger grades, especially pre-K through K. We've heard from families that they either chose a five-day-week in-person option due to childcare needs or on the other end of the spectrum, decided to delay in-person learning. So we have demand in pre-K through kindergarten, but the CDC guidelines reduce our capacity. So the second option on the next slide, our goal would be to maintain enrollment of 35,261. Again, this is just a refresher that elementary is down, high school is slightly up. And this would assume that we continue in the current pandemic environment, including the six feet of social distance and other CDC guidelines. For in either scenario, and we'll cover this on the next slide, if you can switch. It would include a recruiting campaign. So what's next? In December, principals will review the school-by-school numbers. And then this gets into the recruiting, three kind of level or prong recruiting campaigns that will launch in December and last through summer. And it will include outreach to individual families, focus on And it will include outreach to individual families, focus on pre-K and kindergarten as well as under-enrolled school communities or neighborhoods, especially elementary. And then macro-level messaging like billboards, social, website. In January, we'll survey CDA families about their intent to return to their original school. This dovetails with our magnet capacity planning in January and February. And in March, we will review projections with the additional data that we'll have at that time around the effectiveness of school safety measures as well as community health. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, Krista. This is very good and informative. The direction one, direction two, are these options or are these parallel happening at the same time?
Thank you. They are options. So at some point, for budget planning purposes, we'll need to choose a direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lindy? Okay, I got you.
Thank you. Thanks, President Jones, and thanks, Krista. I think one thing that I found really very helpful and encouraging in this was the fact that you can basically explain 90% of the decline by parents who didn't add pre-K or kindergartners. I don't think I realized that before this presentation and that that feels like an important piece of news and I think good news, unless I'm misreading it. Because it's not the case that there are lots of kids that we expected to have in the upper grades, not even upper grades, I mean, third, fourth, fifth grade. So I think my first question is, am I making something up or is that accurate? And then I think my second question was, I feel like I remember in an earlier presentation, our enrollment being around 34,000, not 35,000, because I remember the delta between what we expected and what we had to be around 2,000 kids. I feel like when we had our work session, that that's about where the number was. And so I was trying to understand if that's right, what explains that, why are we now higher than that?
So this would be from data from mid-October. So it's probable that that work session happened before this data. And these are just comparative year-to-year points. So it fluctuates a little bit, which is why we pick a, kind of that mid-October comparison point.
And would you comment a little bit on, am I right that this is good news?
I mean, I think it depends on your perspective. So obviously, it's taken us off of our growth path. I do think when you dig into the data, you're correct. Being able to see that high school is actually up a little bit signifies that that piece kind of continues as planned. So that focus on the pre-K kindergarten and either getting those folks be comfortable enough to enroll next year or come back, depending on what decision they made, will be a definite focus area.
And I think that makes great sense. This is the last piece. The reason I said I thought it might be good news is, I know over the summer and early parts of the fall, I was really worried that there were kids we weren't reaching who had been a part of CPS and for whom the pandemic and learning remotely just proved, for whatever reason, been an enormous challenge for families. And this seems to prevent evidence that that's not actually happening, which I think would be a good thing. Unless I'm wrong about any of that, in which case, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, thank you for that update. I just wanted to make sure you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Good. Yeah, and, you know, I think as it relates, Mr. Lindy's question, I think, is a good one. As it relates to students we weren't able to connect with earlier, that delta was much larger than what we're seeing here. And so my guess is, as we've gone on throughout the year, and I think as we've heard in the past, it does sometimes take a while to connect with some of our families. This year, it was just a lot harder. I think there was some talk in the community that people were dishonest and that things were being hid. All we knew is the attendance that was taken and that was then brought to the board. There was no smoke and mirrors and things happening there. But I think that's my first question, though. The delta that we saw at the beginning, that I think, obviously, this presentation goes hand-in-hand with the last one. Enrollment is a big part of our revenues. Thinking that we were thousands behind back then, I'm assuming this means then we have found X number of those students, but we've gotten down to a number here that has specifically moved on. So is that correct? We've closed that gap significantly?
So I think it's fair to say we pulled it significantly. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head and I don't unfortunately remember exactly what we presented the last time we presented attendance. So is that something that we could follow up with, kind of the specific numbers?
Yeah, because the numbers at the beginning, if you remember, that was widely talked about, we were in the thousands of students who we were not connecting with. And I think, you know, it was like, let's say it was six or seven, because we talked about, well, we've gotten to 2,000 of them with our program and getting access to internet, et cetera. But anyway, this is a much different gap than what we had presented back at the early part of the school year. And then, you know, I think this number, as I understand it, is just the difference between last year's number and this year's number. It's not taking the growth, because we've had a lot of students. I mean, I know quite a few students just in our neighborhood that are new to CPS this year. So those are in. So we've maybe lost more than just the delta shows, correct? Or did you already back out all new registrations for this year?
Yep, so this would be the net. So if you look grade by grade, there are bigger discrepancies. So this 1,100 is the net. And it would assume that we retain all of the growth we saw in high school, that almost 400 number, and then about half of the pre-K, kindergarten, kind of elementary level.
Yeah, and so that, I think, is, you know, I'd love to get my hands on that specific number. Because, yeah, we might be down 1,100. Well, we might be down, I don't know what the new number, let's say it's 500, then we're really down 1,600 students and 500 new ones came in. So, you know, in our effort to get back to growth, obviously, we want to find out where all those students are, and again, by school, in addition to grade. And then, you know, I think that it may be worth, given the dollar attached to that volume of students, to engage with some of those families sooner versus later with some market research. Or have you done that, testing these assumptions, that if this is offered, do you plan to return to CPS? Or if they've engaged with one of these private options, do we think that they are going to maintain that path forward for an extended amount of time?
So let me take the second piece and then come back to the numbers. So that would be a part of that individual follow-up, would be starting really with a survey to those families, just to understand where they are and what their interests would be and what the drivers were for them to choose a different option. And then, okay, so this is off the top of my head, which makes me a little nervous, but I went through and added up all the schools over the weekend and it was in the 300 to 400 range in terms of overall increases. It's hard to do it by school because of the number of kids that moved to CDA, which is why I've been more focused on, and we will survey those families as well, but it's why I've been more focused on the grade, because that's a cleaner, it's a cleaner data pool, if that makes sense.
So if I could ask Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty to come forward to talk about all the efforts that were put in place since we gave you that original number, to be able to make sure that we could account for our students, including withdrawing kids who actually, who we couldn't account for within the district. While Assistant Superintendent Bunty is coming forward, I would do want to add just a little bit of context, because a lot of work has gone into making sure that we could account for our young people in an authentic, real way. Since the board made the decision a couple of weeks ago, week before last, to go to distance learning, an additional 200 families have come forward to take us up on the Wi-Fi. And so you can see that we've been actually, families have been reaching out to us and we've been reaching out to them to really gain a true number of how many kids are in our district. So Susan, please, thank you.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to all of our staff, including our administrators and our teachers and our social workers and paraprofessionals, who have been relentless in their search for our students. So they have been conducting home visits and phone calls and really just making sure that students are accounted for and not only accounted for, but engaging. So there are many, many stories of social workers going into homes and helping families connect with the tech helpline so that they can get their internet connected. They are trying to resolve problems when we were in in-person learning around transportation, making sure that folks had access to uniforms so that they were removing barriers so that our students could attend school.
Ms. Bates?
Ms. Boyle kind of alluded to this, and maybe I can make the question a little more specific. Are we seeing pockets where we're losing children? Like, is it East Side or West Side or Magnet or Neighborhood? Are there trends that we're, you know, are they close to new charter schools that look bright and shiny or whatever?
So I think until we survey the CDA kids and understand who moved from where, it'll be a little bit hard to understand the reductions. The number from, that I was saying I looked at over the weekend, it was 338, increase of 338 across nine schools.
I do believe that we can pull that information to see which schools' kids have enrolled in outside of CPS.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Overall, I think it's positive because I really had anticipated, like a lot of urban districts, even in Ohio, that our overall loss would be about 10%. And it is not that. So that's, I think, a good, at least the way I do the math, anyway. But I do think Mr. Messer's point, and he's done it before, that net as to who we lost and who we've gained, our numbers newer or people that stayed. From some context, I think there's only two of the seven board members that remember when we celebrated when the decline finally stopped in enrollment and where we then plateaued for two years and then the rise. So I'm predisposed to always go with the higher number because I always thought, you know, if we build it, as we did with the Facilities Master Plan, that they will come. Beyond that, two or three things. The preschool campaign can almost be separate and very much more aggressive and individualized, as we've found. And I think that that is a real important target to try to accelerate for these kids that have now lost part of a year or more. So, I mean, you can have a preschool campaign, you have a regular campaign. I think it's remarkable that the high school numbers are high because those kids really would need to graduate, no matter the condition or instructional model or whatever, versus the little people that perhaps can be, you know, need to be at home and what have you. So I think that's important. If it's possible, I would advise that every urban district that I know of is having the same disappearance of children. And many, I know President Jones saw it last night, I think, yeah, the 60 Minutes segment out of Tampa. And I'm so encouraged that Assistant Superintendent Bunty has talked about home visits and reaching out to families because that's what they're having to do everywhere, where Tampa's lost at least 7,000 kids that they've had to go try to find because of economic conditions, because of COVID, because they're helping their families get through this by taking on jobs. Fascinating. So I think we're with other folks in doing a pretty good job and I would encourage that we do even more of that if we could. I still want to know and be able to tell the public, when all this started, reference again to the op-ed about when we had the crisis in the spring, how many of our children did not have access, Wi-Fi access, versus how many do not have it now? And how we've been aggressive about pursuing that? So I think, you know, one of the original numbers was like 11,000, which represented a third of our student population. That may have been high or it might have been low, I don't know. But I do think it'd be great if we do know an estimate now as to how far we've come because you've referenced it in the op-ed. And I think it allows us to even be conscientious about remote and about distance, whereas in the beginning of this, we could not do it. In the name of equity, we could not do it, barely. So I don't know if we have those kind of numbers to share, but I think that would be part of it. But I say go for the big numbers.
Yeah.
It is north of 6,000, is that right, Jeremy? Who have gotten Wi-Fi as part of the Connect Our Students program?
6,000 that have received Wi-Fi.
Jeremy's going to come.
Just to add to that story a little bit from Eve's point and a little leniency because I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, so estimates. We did start with around 11,000, which was a very rough estimate that we started with based on that census data. That as we surveyed families, we were able to reduce that down to around 8,000. And I think that might be the number that Ryan was actually referencing, where we thought we had approached around 2,000, we had 6,000 left. And now, as we've actually been able to give out the Wi-Fi and really engage with our students during the return through all of our outreach efforts, we've refined that number even lower to where it looked like, instead of 30%, where we started, we were really around 18% is what it looked like didn't have. So we were around 7,000 students that truly did not have access that we needed to cover. So we're up to around 6,400.
6,483.
Thank you. 6,483.
Who's counting, right?
As of today. So we're pretty confident that we have a good grasp of those numbers now, that we're around 500, a little bit lower as to what's left, that we're still engaging with on a constant basis to get Wi-Fi to.
Yep.
If I could say, that's just a remarkable story. And I think we need to be able to tell that as much as we can everywhere. That is remarkable.
Yeah, and actually, Ms. Bolton addressed my question, which had to do with the number of kids where, and I'm very pleased that we're able to connect with that many kids, but there's probably still pockets in our community where Wi-Fi is not accessible just based on the wiring or whatever. And are there efforts, you know, are we working with folks around that? And how's that going?
Sorry, yes. So in addition to the Connect Our Students, the wired program that we offer through Cincinnati Bell and with the community effort, we have also taken a second layer approach. So any student or family who can't get access due to wiring or they can't get access to a high enough speed to support the number of students living in that household, we have enough hotspots that we've been able to procure that we're offering those as an additional layer. So either as the primary connectivity, if the family can't get connected, or as a secondary, if the slower speed is all that's available and you have multiple students, we can add a hotspot to give additional speed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Wonderful. Any other questions or comments?
President Jones, just for the benefit, again, of the public and me, we're not just talking about distributing the instruments.
Right.
We are talking about Wi-Fi after decades of certain entities deciding not even to cover certain neighborhoods because it was not a sustainable business practice. So, I mean, this is, I don't, I'm not sure this is happening anywhere else to this level.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Great, great presentation. Yes. Superintendent?
Yes, our last presentation this evening will be our usual safety planning update. And so our Chief Strategy Officer, Sarah Tumbel Oliver, will provide to you the community data as well as the Cincinnati Public Schools data.
Good evening. So tonight, we will continue our ongoing updates of the COVID health data. We are going to start with the Ohio Department of Health COVID School Dashboard, which counts the COVID cases in schools in the state of Ohio. So we pulled out Hamilton County schools. Last week, there were 176 new student cases, 93 new staff cases in Hamilton County public schools. And that is out of about 114,000 students enrolled. That is up from the prior week, which we've added a graph on the right side of the slide to help put those numbers in context from week to week. So you can see that that is an increase from the prior week in both student and staff cases. We also are showing the We also are showing the counts of cases for charter schools and private schools in Hamilton County. Next slide is our city daily new cases epidemiological curve. Our seven-day average continues to increase. The seven-day average is now at 191 new cases per day, which was up from this time last week when I stood before you, when it was 176. The 14-day trend, we do have four data points for this update that are green in the decreasing seven-day moving average. But the seven-day moving average does equate to 62 per 100,000 for the city. So 62 daily new cases per 100,000, which was up from last Monday, which was 58. And on the next slide, unfortunately, the positivity rate has also increased from our report last week. The city of Cincinnati at 7.8% and the Hamilton County outside of the city at 11.8%. The average length for test results remains about the same at about two days. And then finally, for our CPS COVID case count, we have, since we started blended learning, 120 confirmed student cases out of about 35,000 students and 164 confirmed staff cases out of about 6,000 staff. And so even though we did begin distance learning this week, we are continuing to ask our families and our staff to continue reporting positive cases. Staff would report that to the COVID hotline, and families will report student positive cases to the school nurse, who is continuing to provide services during distance learning. And we are also asking our Cincinnati community to help us get our kids back in in-person school by diligently wearing masks, social distancing, and washing hands. And that concludes the community health update.
Thank you. Board members have questions or comments? None?
Thank you.
Must have been a thorough report. I don't know about you guys, but I feel like a popsicle. Okay. All right. I guess we could tolerate it. Okay. If we're ready to continue with the hearing of the public? You all ready or did we miss something? Okay. We are now at the item on the agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here again are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. Members of the public who wish to speak during the board meeting must make requests through the chat feature, including your full name, affiliation to the district, school, community, and contact information for response to questions. This request models standard practice if we were meeting in person in the ed center. Treasurer Wagner will be our timekeeper. Once the request has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you. How many speakers? We have 11. Our first speaker tonight is Jason Munzel, followed by Liam O'Shaughnessy.
Hi. Hope you can hear me. My name is Jason Munzel, and I'm a member of the Cincinnati community. Thanks for taking time to listen to my comment. I want to show support for the demands of the Young Activist Coalition. I want the complete withdrawal of police from all Cincinnati public schools, as well as transformative and restorative justice in schools. This is extremely important to me because police presence disproportionately harms Black students. Black students make up 63% of the total population in CPS, but 85% of police referrals. Children in schools should not be criminalized, and the police presence does this and it needs to be removed. I want CPD out of CPS and transformative justice in schools. Thank you.
Liam O'Shaughnessy, you're next, followed by Christopher Moldrew.
Yes, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Liam O'Shaughnessy. I go to Wyoming High School, and I come here tonight as a student who cares about the well-being of other students. And tonight, I'm once again calling on you to support the Young Activist Coalition's demands to cut ties with the CPD and establish transformative and restorative justice. As said by the previous speaker, 63% of students enrolled in CPD are Black, but 85% of policy referrals are given to Black students. Now, you don't have to be a statistician to know that this is a significant difference that does not show a good relationship between students and the police and is directly due to the police and the policy. Even a perfectly proportionate system of suspensions or police referrals would not create justice. It would still criminalize students. That's why I'm calling on you to support the Young Activist Coalition's demands to get the CPD out of CPS and implement transformative and restorative justice that your children's future depend on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christopher Moldrew, followed by Alice Flanders.
Yes. I just want to thank you guys for making some changes at Western Hills. I hope those changes were reflective at any Cincinnati public schools that were running that model. We did get the schedule.
Mr. Moldrew, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you please click your camera icon?
I did click my camera icon when I started, and when I clicked.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Did it. So now, so thank you guys for making those changes. Hopefully, those changes were not just effective at Western Hills, but also effective at any Cincinnati public school that was running that educational model. So we did, the time go from 12 hours now to hours, which is closer to the other schools like Evanston and Walnut Hills, which were doing about a little bit over 20 as well. So thank you for that. The thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that you might see a dip in students midterm grades, and I would not want this board to accredit the dip in student mid because you went in person. Actually, students are getting docked on midterm because they weren't provided work, and since they weren't provided work, their grades were docked. Or if you happen to go to school on Tuesday and art is on Thursday, then you got your art grade docked. So when you do see, and I think this will be something that will be reflective across the district, so when you do see a dip in students midterm grades, please do not associate that with the failure of in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Flanders, you're next, followed by Taylor Jackie.
Hi, my name is Alice Flanders, and I'm an alum of the CPS system. And I'm here today to stand with the Young Activist Coalition and the students that talked before, demanding that Cincinnati Public break their ties with CPD and get cops out of school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Taylor Jackie, you're up next, followed by Faith Gingrich-Gatz.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
My name is Taylor Jackie, and I'm calling in support of the Young Activist Coalition.
Excuse me, can you please click on the camera icon?
Oh, yeah, it wasn't working for a second. My name is Taylor Jackie, and I'm calling in support of the Young Activist Coalition's demands for Cincinnati public schools to completely cut ties with Cincinnati Police Department and remove student resource officers from the schools, as well as implement well-funded, well-planned systems of transformative justice in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Faith Gingrich-Gatz, you're up next, and Owen Derico, you're after Faith.
Hi, my name is Faith Gingrich-Gatz. I am a previous CPS, oh, it's doing my video back and forth. I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
There we go.
Can you please click the camera icon? There you go. Thank you.
I did. It was just, I'm so sorry about that. Again, my name's Faith Gingrich-Gatz. I'm a previous CPS student and a current community member. And I am also calling in support of Young Activist Coalition's demands for CPS to remove school resource officers from our schools and cut ties with CPD and implement well-funded, well-planned systems of transformative and restorative justice within our schools, as previous speakers have stated. But what I feel should be, you know, reemphasized is that Black students make up 63% of the total student populations, but are 85% of police referrals. However, even if these referrals were proportionate and not seemingly racially motivated, the issue still stands that research, for example, from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, shows, does not show that student resource officer, school resource officers, or police in schools increase safety. Instead, this research actually shows the opposite and shows that it reinforces the school-to-prison pipeline, reinforces the criminalization of students of color, and the goal is still to criminalize adolescent behavior. The Sergeant Schreiber National Center on Poverty Law recently stated in their report that research shows that the mere presence of police officers in school increases the likelihood that a student will be referred to law enforcement for adolescent behavior based on students of color, puts students in direct contact with the justice system. Poor policing within schools therefore puts students on the fast track to the school-to-prison pipeline. I just once again ask that CPS implement well-funded, well-planned systems of transformative and restorative justice within our schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Owen Derico, you're up next, followed by Megan Grayler.
Am I visible?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Hello, my name is Owen Derico. I am a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School, and I am here today with the Young Activists Coalition. Board members, over the past weeks and months, when we as an organization and as a student and district community have come to you asking that you commit yourselves to shifting our schools away from punitive justice to creating a safe environment for our students, our students to learn and grow up in, and to beginning to end the school-to-prison pipeline all too present in your district by severing CPS's relationship with the Cincinnati Police Department and removing police presence in our schools. You told us that you needed to listen to the position of the community before you would make that kind of a decision. Well, I hope you're listening because the community is here. Parents, students, and teachers have shown up time and time again to tell you in no uncertain terms what they want and what our schools need. When they speak, as they have already done tonight and will continue to do, it is your responsibility to listen and, more importantly, to respond with real decisive action. And we won't go away until you start acting. You have the power to fix our schools. It's a question of whether or not you're willing.
Megan Grayler, you're up next, followed by Eliza O'Keefe.
Hi, can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. I am also here, I'm speaking on behalf of the Young Activist Coalition. I, police should not be in our schools. I mean, as children, you know, it's not, we shouldn't be criminalized, and Black students are unproportionately affected by arrests made by police in our schools, which shows that, you know, there's not a healthy relationship there and that police arrests are higher in schools with police, which shows that, you know, it's not, it's not about the actions that the police are taking or that the students are taking. It's about micro, not micro, hyper fixation and looking for problems, and students should not be criminalized. There are much safer and better ways to have justice for our students and for our schools than with police officers.
Are you, Eliza O'Keefe, you're up next. Youssef, if you would accept the invitation, you would be after her.
Okay, am I visible?
No, you're not yet.
I'm not? Okay, where, where do I go?
The camera? Your camera?
I'm looking for the, oh, here it is. I guess it's just not working. Okay, well, I'll say my.
Go ahead.
What? Sorry?
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Eliza O'Keefe, and I'm calling as a student at Walnut Hills High School in support of the Young Activist Coalition's demands for CPS to completely cut ties with CPD and remove school resource officers from our schools, as well as implement well-funded, well-planned systems of transformative and restorative justice within our schools. So I read your anti-racism plan, and I was like, okay, okay. It sounds nice, but nowhere does it address the issue of police presence in our schools. And I understand that might have some support among, you know, the people who elect you because at a distance, it looks like a comforting idea, but incidences of mass violence, like school shootings, are exceedingly rare. So what the presence of these officers is actually doing is criminalizing the students they're supposed to protect, particularly, and this is statistically speaking, Black students, which is a definition of the school-to-prison pipeline. So I, myself and Young Activist Coalition, are demanding that CPS begin to correct this injustice by terminating their relationship with the CPD and implementing transformative justice in our schools, including redirecting funds into mental health resources for students. Thank you.
Thank you. Youssef Munir, you're up. You're our last speaker for the evening.
Hello, my name is Youssef Munir. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm a senior at Walnut Hills High School, and I have been a CPS student for the past six years. And I'm calling today because I'm the president of Young Activist Coalition, and we demand that CPS completely cut ties with CPD and completely remove SROs from our schools, as well as implement well-funded, well-planned systems of transformative and restorative justice. According to the ACLU, the data shows that schools with police have 3.5 times as many arrests at schools without police. And that's not any different for CPS schools. The other students before me told you the data. They told you that Black students are disproportionately criminalized. But again, to emphasize the main point, even if the referrals to the police were completely proportionate, it is an absolute disgrace to the people and students and kids that you serve that students are criminalized at all, that students' behavior, that the behavior of just regular kids could result in their entire futures being robbed from them. We are here demanding that CPS completely cut ties with CPD and remove SROs from all CPS schools, and that you implement well-funded, well-planned-out transformative and restorative justice. We understand and we know what this takes. We hope that you do as well. And for all of the parents and students watching this, we want you to know that if you go to our Instagram or Facebook, @YoungActivistCoalition, we have the opportunity for any student to get involved, and we are always looking for more people. Everyone, this fight requires all of us, and especially if the board members continues to be as obstinate as they have been. Remember, board members, we elected you, you serve us. You don't serve the police department, you serve us. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Jones?
Yes.
Speaker Julie Keller. Okay. Is there one more speaker? Okay. If I could just speak then, I wanted to make sure there wasn't another speaker before I made my comments. Though I've listened for several weeks and have taken copious notes. several weeks and have taken copious notes regarding what our students have said, and understand their point of view. I will say that, starting back in June, we began conversations with our African-American students about what they wanted to see within our schools. Multiple African-American students from a variety of high schools. And this has been an ongoing basis. And what the African-American students told me, and our assistant superintendent, Shawna Murphy, is that they're not asking for the police to be removed, they put their demands in writing to us, and their demands were centered around building a collaborative relationship with the police. The African-American students said in many instances, they know the resource officers who are in their schools, they enjoy working with them, they're not, there may not be everyone's experience, but I'm telling you from the point of the African-American students, who have consistently come forward to speak on this issue on their own behalf. Our assistant superintendent, Murphy, has had ongoing conversations and meetings with them. I will provide to you the exact document that they produced, where they outline what they're asking for. They asked for relationship building, they asked for transparency with the police department, and they also asked for training with the police officers. They asked us to meet with the police, which we have on multiple occasions, and to hold listening sessions, which have already begun, with the African-American community. So, Assistant Superintendent Shawna Murphy hosted the first session with, is it with parents, with parents, this past Friday, and then our student session is tomorrow. So, I just want to make sure that we have the voice of the African-American students at the table while we are talking about them and around them. Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent. I think that clarification and update was timely, and we appreciate all the work that's being done. And it's not to discount what students are saying, we want them to know that we do hear their concerns. But just to clarify, we are, you are meeting with African-American students that represent a cross-section of our high schools. Is that correct?
Yes. If I also may ask, that there are many instances in which I've observed over a long career of very well-intentioned people making decisions for other groups without actually involving them in the decision-making process. And so, again, I felt compelled to say what our African-American students have articulated to myself, as well as to our assistant superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So, let's move on. Does anyone have any kudos? Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, President Jones. I have kudos for Assistant Superintendent Shawna Murphy and her team regarding the CCP information session that I listened to last week. I kind of got mixed up with my LSDMC dates and times, but I was listening to that. But I just thought it was a very informative collaboration with UC, Cincinnati State, Chatfield College. Lots of information and understanding of the differences with AP courses, CCP courses, and I was just, it was a lot of information, and it was very well-attended, and I just want to congratulate you and your team on that. Facebook Live, I believe it was on Facebook Live.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
I just wanted to do two kudos quickly. One, I think, again, to Jen and her team around the heroic work on the budget. But then also, just, I wanted to thank the superintendent for her response to engaging young people of color and African-American young people around the police issue, and your response to our speakers tonight. I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Any other kudos? All right. Ms. Bates, do we have any retirements? We do not. No retirements. Okay. All righty. So, Ms. Morosky, we're at the item on the agenda for Board Matters.
Yes, I do. Thank you, President Jones. As promised last week, I would put the, I said I would put the anti-racism policy on the agenda for this week in case there were still more comments. So, it's really for y'all. If anybody has anything, if not, we're fine. I will just call out one thing, two things. Next Friday, we will see another draft of this in Policy Committee, as noted. Ideally, that draft would get passed out of Policy and then put before this body with one of the three board meetings that are left in the school year for ult, I'm sorry, calendar year for ultimate passage, so we can go on to 2021 with this policy at our back, particularly as we head into the spring and look to adopt a new anti-racism curriculum. I think that's timely. But that's just kind of a repeat, level-set sort of thing. The other thing that I am inclined to add, Board Member Bolton, last time, I think everybody saw pieces of their suggestions in here. One thing that did not make it in, that I would suggest adding, and I can do it formally in an assignment as well, is Board Member Bolton had brought up including some wording, or at least allusion to the fact, that the State Board had passed a resolution condemning all forms of racism, systemic racism, and white supremacy culture, et cetera. So, on the, the second page, or your stuff may print differently than mine, it's the section titled "Purpose." The suggestion I would make, a revision suggestion I would make, based on Board Member Bolton's suggestion, is at the end of that first paragraph, which is really just a sentence, "The purpose of this policy is to create processes that identify form of racism, et cetera, and then work to counter its effects," that we would include almost verbatim this, "As the State Board of Education has stated in their resolution to condemn racism and advance equity and opportunity for Black students, Indigenous students, and students of color, we also condemn," and then this would be, quote, "in the strongest possible terms, white supremacy culture, hate speech, hate crimes, and violence in the service of hatred." So, that would be, and I think it would be best fit, too, in that purpose piece. So, that's the only thing I would add, and then open it up if anybody has anything.
Yes. If I could add, I think I committed, and I didn't follow up on it, but I promised to get it to you tomorrow, an additional statement or two, very short, nothing major, but some similarity or parallel to wording in the equity policy. So, please allow me until tomorrow to get that to you.
For sure. Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, then? Good deal. We're almost there.
Awesome. Almost there. Great. Thanks, y'all.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, so we're ready for our resolutions. Ms. Bolton, please present the following resolution.
Thank you very much. I present this resolution, I hope for passage, a resolution approving the five-year forecast.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates? Aye. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy, please present the next resolution.
Thank you, President Jones. I present a resolution for the amended appropriation resolution for fiscal year 2020, 2021, as written.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bates, please present the next resolution.
Yes, I have a resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 general operating, general fund operating budget. I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. I have a resolution reappointing Audit Committee members. You'll recall that this appeared in the Finance Minutes at least twice before, and we are now prepared upon the approval of both the Audit Committee members and Finance to present, to present four members who are continuing and extending their terms, and Jennifer Kuser, Christine Fisher, Carol Mitchell Lawrence, and Clarice Warner. We appreciate their interest and support of our efforts here financially. I submit.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
And then the last one, Ms. Bowers, my apology, hold on, Mr. Morosky was assigned.
Okay.
So, Mr. Morosky?
Pull it up. I have it, right here, I just need to pull it up. I did not realize I was assigned the last one. Ohio Senate Bill?
Yep.
Yep. I have a resolution supporting Ohio Senate Bill 358, extending relief to school districts in response to COVID-19. I would present this resolution as written for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. I have a very short report, and we're going to pull up a couple PowerPoint slides to highlight. Next slide, please. The Free Store Food Bank and their partnership with Hartwell School, they have opened a food pantry there, so we're very excited about that. McCormick and Company and the Free Store Food Bank sponsored this pantry for our families, as well as our kids. Families can get food, as well as hygiene products from this location, and they gave out many, many dinners for Thanksgiving, and so we're very appreciative of Hartwell welcoming them into our schools, but also we're very appreciative of the food store Free Bank, their willingness to open a, another pantry within the CPS footprint. Next slide. And I like to be able to highlight, I try not to highlight SCPA too, too much. I don't want to give them any favoritism, however.
Why is that, Superintendent?
Tonight, I like to highlight on November the 6th, seven seniors from the school for the Creative and Performing Arts won awards. This is a part of a 34-year tradition within our district and within SCPA. This was the 34th Annual Corbett-Merrison Award. This has been happening since the 1980s, and it is a strong part of the foundation of SCPA. So, we have visual artists, Kamora Butler and Alex Tanvir, Drama Amir Shackelford, Dance Draven Wilmers, and Egypt Hunt, Musical Theater Sarah Williams, and Technical Theater Julian Hooper, Hooper, sorry, Hooper. Reynolds? Oh, sorry, Sarah Reynolds, my apologies, and Technical Theater Julian.
Hooper.
Hooper. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I have no problems with acknowledging the hard work of the students of SCPA, as my daughter was a finalist in her 2018, 17-year of Corbett-Merrison. So, always give accolades to the hard work that those students put in. It's extremely fundamental, it's fabulous. So, always recognize that.
Yes, Superintendent, did you want to stay, make a statement or anything about the, yeah?
I am so sorry. Yes, I apologize. So, at this point, I want to make a well-known for our students, as well as our community and our parents, that we are going to continue to move forward with athletics at this time, and we'll revisit it next week during our board meeting. We are going to add some additional safety measures in place for the games that will be happening between now and our next board meeting. So, just to give you some indication, during the time that players are seated on the bench and are not playing, they will be required to wear their mask. In addition to, we will stream the basketball games as we did with our football games, and because this is an indoor sport, we will not have spectators in the stands watching the games. We will allow the press-in, as well as recruiters from colleges and universities. More to come next week, but for now, we are continuing to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Ms. Wagner? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Inquiries and updates? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. Very happy to report some of the results of the district-wide LSDMC. You have before you a quick memo of notes from both the conversation, as well as the chat that took place as well. And you'll see that there were a number of topics on the agenda. We learned more about the RFPs, now required regarding lead agencies for LSDMCs, largely because it's federally, in part federally funded. We have, we're introduced to a program, AXO, which is a competition regarding performing arts that the, our own local NAACP is interested in having CPS participate in. And then mostly, the largest, longest part of the conversation, the chat, dealt with asking questions and making suggestions to board members. I've tried to list the ones that are there. All of them require perhaps some discussion, but you'll notice that some of these are issues that are old and have been with us for a while, and some of them are new suggestions and ideas. And the most particular one that came up for, for the longest period of conversation was perhaps the need for additional community and slash parent, family engagement and participation. And that also really was a conversation about PTOs and PTAs, which is, as you know, is a part of our strategic plan. And it'll, I'll be asking to make an assignment later, but there were some really good suggestions about lead agencies, good suggestions about, do we use a Zoom account instead of Google, because some of our community members don't have the account that they need for Google. There was, somebody has a blessing box outside of their building. The idea of more, they thought that technology was increasing participation and engagement, and that they liked the idea that maybe that gets more people there, because they've all witnessed, and I suggested to them, as did the president, we've seen a rise in participation, too, having gone remote. Also, they were concerned about some of the services for Project Connect Kids. They complemented paraprofessionals. They wanted a little bit more, as we've said tonight earlier, stability, or at least a longer understanding as to when something might be happening. But these were really great suggestions. As you read on the back of this particular memo, they wanted to keep clubs and sports, they wanted to know how to get more people to be able to be advisors. They complemented a couple of Westside community groups, especially Westwood Works. We had, as it mentioned, about, at the height, about 120 folks there, and as to my calculation, at least 45 of our schools were represented in this district-wide effort, and that's a low number, just because I couldn't necessarily identify some of the community members, or some of the parents. They really also wanted to see more commitment to in-person, if possible, but understood, remote. And they were interested in streaming the board meetings, continuing to do that, remote testifying, as I mentioned. I was really thrilled, too, that part of the conversation was about student voice and student representation, and indeed, the students are serving, and in some schools, voting. It depends upon the school, as we had decided last year. The, another issue on the back page that I think was important was that they were interested in whether or not the medical services and food distribution services would be able to be continued. They also were particularly interested is what's going to be happening with COVID testing, and would the schools be test sites? And I think there was a veil. And I think there was a quick reference to vaccination sites, perhaps. And then they all decided, too, that do a better job of inviting the community and parents and students to LSDMC meetings. But again, very interested in PTOs or PTAs as a way to build the parent and family leadership in the buildings. So I hope this will capture some interest, and as we look at that new CPS, and we look or review our own strategic plan, tremendous amount of great dialogue. I think, Ms. Jones, you might want to talk a little bit about your reaction to the evening.
Well, you captured a lot, most of the conversation, and I don't have anything to add to that. But I thought it was an interesting format. You know, they really liked dialoguing directly with the board. It was, we had about, I can't remember how much time, it was about 10 minutes at the end for our Q and A, and it evoked just a lot of dialogue. And I think that was helpful in terms of us building a relationship with our community folk. So they had a chance to ask some very different questions, and so in talking with Assistant Superintendent Murphy about the possibility of doing that periodically, and maybe rotating board to come and do just a short Q and A at the end of their meeting. We're not really a part of their meeting, but we're there to listen and learn and hear from them, and then maybe have that 10 minutes to have a Q and A dialogue with them. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton? Okay. Any assignments? Yes. Ms. Bates, first?
Yes. We did not have a November Health and Safety Committee meeting, and Mr. Lindy brought several topics to my attention, and to Ms. Mitchell's attention as well, that would be appropriate for consideration in health and safety. So I would like to bring that to the board, so that we could assign it to the administration for review and research, and then bring that back to health and safety at the December meeting. And the first is to follow up on Dr. Khan from Cincinnati Children's Hospital. He mentioned that there might be a way to do a study to evaluate when it would be safe to bring students back closer than six feet. So that's something that would be, that we would want the administration to review and make a recommendation on, if this is a study that would be helpful to the district and possible for the district to conduct with Cincinnati Children's. Also, distributing PPE to families if it's funded outside of the district, because we all, we all saw the budget today, there's not a lot of slack, but if we can work with the medical community to distribute PPE to families, much like we do with, you know, with nutrition. So that's another issue. And student safety on buses, we would like some data on incidents on buses, that, you know, we hear of isolated incidences, but is there a trend? So the Health and Safety Committee would like to provide oversight on that. And also, emergency communication. And Mr. Lindy provided a one-pager on that. Ms. Mitchell, you have this in email form, but I wanted to let the board know of the interest, and that health and safety, this would be an appropriate place for the administration to bring back recommendations on these topics for our December meeting.
When is your December meeting? Just, I just might suggest, maybe it's, you know, you all can decide that, but that's like next week. It doesn't give them a lot of time to do the work. What is it? Two weeks?
Three.
Three weeks?
Right.
Okay.
And they don't have to bring us conclusions or a study, but, I mean, every committee has an agenda.
That's fine. I just was thinking off the top of my head, you want them to have time to complete the assignment, especially if they're asking for data, but I'm good with that. I'm good with it.
I mean, we don't have to, we want to start the conversation and
That's fine.
And review these issues.
Okay. Next assignment?
Mr. Morosky? Just to formalize my informal assignment to Assistant General Counsel Stephanie Scott to add that piece into the anti-racism policy, I will also follow this assignment up with an email that spells it out exactly how it should look, to Ms. Scott, Mr. Hoying, and Phyllis Davis.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, did you have?
Yes. In reference to the LSDMC meetings, it would, I'd like to see if it's possible for the administration to put together the information, school by school, as to which schools have a CLC, and which schools have a PTO or a PTA. And if there's, there's also kind of that community liaison position, I don't know if that still exists, but at least just that information, so that we could see perhaps where we need to continue to work on PTOs and PTAs, and perhaps with the CLCs. I know it's, they've done this before, where you also list the lead agency for each of the, each of the CLCs, just information. And then the other thing is, just from an information and public relations piece, I think it was well-done on the op-ed and referencing all that we've done regarding Wi-Fi and technology distribution, but it really seems that there's a larger story there, whether it's for the national media, or whether it's for our local media, whether it's a human interest, whatever, or community partnership. I just think that it's a huge, huge story. So I mean, that's, I say it to you all, you figure it out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other assignments? Any other assignments? Okay, having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned.